Near the entrance door to the council's chambers, you will be called to speak during the public comments section. Comments or testimony on agenda items listed under public hearing, public comment will be taken at that time. Roll call, please.
Mayor Don Williams.
Here.
Dick Anderson.
Here.
Riley Hogland.
Here.
Deanna Hinton.
Here.
Judy Casper.
Here.
And Susan Walke.
Here.
Thank you. Would you please all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I say it all the time, but I love the sound when we have a full audience behind me saying that. Well done. All right. Yes?
I would like to add an item to the agenda, an ordinance 2018-13, to add to the ordinance section.
I'm sorry, ordinance what?
Twenty eighteen dash thirteen. It was at your desk this evening.
Okay.
And there's copies at the sign-in table at the back of the room.
So is that like five? Yeah, item five.
Hi, five.
Hi, five. No item.
Okay, and where is this supposed to be? Five, under ordinances? Okay. Without objection? I do. Just, I don't like ordinances just thrown in front of me at the last minute without having a chance to read them. I don't think this is a proper way to go about this, especially, it seems to me, something that's going to be pretty hot and heavily discussed here. And I don't know if we need a majority on this to put it on or not.
Yeah, for council rules, you guys need to agree to add an item to the agenda.
I'm sorry, I can't at this point. I don't mean to be difficult, but I like to read it before I start talking about these things. I thought we were going to have this in our packet earlier.
It was emailed to us a couple days ago.
It's not in my packet, and it wasn't here for anyone to see who's going to come up and talk about it. So, I'm going to say no, so.
It was in the back of the room.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to add this ordinance to the agenda.
Second. Which agenda?
The agenda tonight. It's agenda. The, to add it to the agenda.
Okay, so I called for objections. I objected. So now you want to do it again?
Yeah, since it's a majority. Just one objection doesn't...
I'm going to double-check Mr. Appicello. Help me out with that.
Okay, so in general, unanimous consent is you ask if anybody objects, and if no one objects, then it's unanimous consent. The other way to take action is through motion. I'm looking at the council rules now because your council rules address this, and so I'll just read what it says. And again, council rules, this is the rules that were incorporated into the, into the code. Okay, council meetings, agenda. City manager's office will prepare an agenda for each council meeting specifying the time and place of the meeting and a brief general description of each item to be considered by council. The mayor or councilor, president, and senator may consult with city manager or designate unscheduled scheduling agenda items. An item may be placed on the council agenda after the agenda is printed and the notice published by the, yeah, and the notice published by the mayor, a counselor, or the city manager, provided the business necessity is explained and the presiding officer consents. City manager will notify the media and interested persons and practice of adding items to the agenda after it has been printed and published is to be discouraged. Now, what I probably didn't say is the business necessity. The city manager came to me on Friday and said that he had some complaints about the city's sign ordinance, specifically about political signs, and I suggested that we fix it. One of the things that's going to the planning commission in October is the sign ordinance. So I suggested that some of the aspects of the sign ordinance were not land use and could be pulled out, and that political signs could be brought forth and corrected in the sense that we specify that, remove any content from the ordinance specifying what signs are allowed during the sixty-day election period. So in response to that, I drafted an ordinance because I can't write an ordinance unless directed to do so by the council or the manager, and I produced the ordinance and emailed it out late Friday with the reference to the council that I would be requesting that it be added to the agenda.
And can you define the "published" for me? It says it has to be published.
Not published like in an ad.
What does it mean then?
Well, the city manager is to try to notify the media, and it was placed on the website, not immediately. I posted the ordinance in accordance with the charter. As you know, the charter says that the city recorder must have a copy three days before the meeting, otherwise I have to read it in full. Also, I have to post in three places in the city that there is an ordinance available, so it was posted at the, at the community center, at the library, and then up here.
Okay, and then the part right after "published," consent of?
The presiding officer consents. So that would be you.
That would be me. Okay, so, I don't.
Okay.
There we go. All right, we bring it up next week, our next meeting. All right, so consent agenda. Where is it? Regular meeting, minutes of regular meeting, August thirteenth, twenty eighteen, six p.m. Regular meeting, minutes of regular meeting, August twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, six p.m. Motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. We have nothing under deliberations. Comments from citizens present on agenda, non-agenda items? I have those. So, we have a lot of people here. Some of you could be here for the very first time. I just want to remind everyone, this is a business meeting. It's not a time for cheering, stomping, yelling, and the like, okay? I'm in charge of decorum, and so if I say please stop it, I need you to stop it. If I can't get you to go along with that, then I'm going to talk to that nice man in the corner and ask him to maybe talk to you. But let's keep it civil, keep it pleasant, keep it moving along. We've got a lot of people here. Also, another thing is, for those of you who've never sat up here, we hear everything you whisper. So if you've got a conversation going on, please take it outside, okay? And we'll get through this. All right, first up, Mr. Alexander. And welcome, everyone, by the way. Didn't mean to start on a down note.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Patrick Alexander, and I am the president of the Lincoln City Warming Shelter. And that's what I'm going to be talking to you about for the next three or four minutes. I want to start by expressing gratitude for the city council's foresight in allocating one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for two years in a row now to benefit local nonprofits. For a city of our size, that commitment to assisting volunteer endeavors is truly inspiring. The forty-five thousand dollar grant that our group received last year formed the financial bedrock of an operation that did a lot of good. Our program director, Amanda, will be following me to give you some more details on that. We are grateful also for the four thousand six hundred dollars awarded this year, which will allow us to continue our mission of serving the most needy among us. That said, even a cursory look at this year's donations shows that our request underperformed compared to the rest of the field, and it's clear that councilors had some issues with our operation. Speaking with some of you, it's become clear that one of those issues concerns our legal ability to host clients overnight at our current premises in Taft Hall, and that's what I want to talk to you about tonight. Our group has been working with the planning department since March towards a solution that would allow overnight use of the shelter as an accessory use to our daytime resource center. We worked towards that goal in good faith for six months, culminating with a zoning amendment application filed with the city on August thirty-first. However, two weeks after that application was filed, I met with the city manager, who told me that accessory use was simply not an option for the overnight shelter. He told me that the only way to have a legal overnight use of Taft Hall would be to amend the zoning to specifically allow for emergency shelters. While this clarity is helpful, it's unfortunate that it came so late in the year. There is now no conceivable way to go through the three-month zoning amendment process, followed by another month's-long conditional use permit application that would be required to operate a shelter in time for this winter. As a result, our group has scrambled and found an alternate premises for overnight shelter, and I am pleased to say that the First Baptist Church on Northwest Seventeenth Street has agreed to step up and fill the gap this winter. The site is currently under review by planning staff. We will continue to operate the daytime resource center in Taft to help motivated clients start to turn their lives around. This kind of last-minute scramble cannot be allowed to happen again. In order for our group to provide overnight shelter in the winter of twenty nineteen, twenty, we need a clearer idea of what the city wants to achieve in the idea of, in the area of homelessness, and how it wants to empower nonprofits to help those, reach those goals. The appropriate format for such an exchange of views would be a workshop session, and my suggestion would be that this is scheduled for after this winter, when we will have new leadership at various levels. I wanted to say one other thing while I've got the mic. There's been considerable discussion of the city's donation on social media, and some of that debate has been extremely ugly. While this is a subject that arouses great passion, we must remember that we are a community, and we will solve these problems by lifting each other up, not by tearing each other down. I would ask everyone in the room tonight, and those at home, to remember that when you speak or type, there is a living, breathing, feeling human at the end of that comment. So please, be kind. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Amanda Cherry Holmes. Amanda.
Amanda, do you have an extra copy for the record?
State your name for the record, and feel free to pull that mic close.
My name is Amanda Cherry Holmes, and I'm the program director for Lincoln City Resource Center and Emergency Warming Shelter. Good evening, city council. First of all, I would like to thank you for the tremendous gift of forty-five thousand dollars that you gave us last year, which has given us the ability to expand exponentially. Showing your financial and moral support is crucial to the growth and success of our nonprofit organization. Since then, we have fulfilled every promise that we made to you, as well as the people in the community that we share. We said that we needed the large grant because we planned on including a year-round program, as well as collaborating with other agencies. We all know that homelessness is not something that is solved overnight, and requires collaboration, partnerships, and shared responsibilities of the workload. I have provided all of you with a small packet of information, which includes our statistics, program overview, our partner agencies, and our sliding scale. We are currently running a full-service resource center Monday through Friday from ten a.m. to four p.m. Our in-house services include a hot shower, laundry service, clothing, shoes, toiletries, valid address, a valid address for photo I.D. and job applications, hot meal, and in-house notary. Our in-house employment services include a job board with local jobs available next to two computers provided for submitting online applications and building resumes. Resume-building assistance is provided if needed. Having the basic necessities available is only a small Band-Aid for the people trying to get out of homelessness. A lot of people simply lack direction, and more often than not, either don't know where the services are, or don't know about any services at all. This is where our resource referral program comes in. We offer an innovative program using a sixty-eight-question form designed specifically to discover what hurdles people have in their lives. After getting through the form, we are able to place them on our sliding scale to getting out of homelessness. Some people only need one agency, but most people need the help of multiple agencies. Our program meets people exactly where they are and helps them figure out what their next step is and which agencies they need to get out of homelessness. In addition to the intensive services that we provide, we also realize that there are a lot, that there are a lot of other services that people need beyond basic necessities. So we began to outsource services, sharing our facility with other agencies. Currently, we have a Lincoln County mental health specialist and a Lincoln County public health harm reduction specialist that comes in once a week, providing services in the office space that we created for them. We are now the new host location for the mobile dental van when it comes to Lincoln City, facilitate a vaccines-for-homeless pets event twice a year, and have a licensed stylist who has partnered with us to do haircuts for homeless every other month. In recent years, you, the council, have made public statements about what kind of program to help solve homelessness that you were looking for. You said that you wanted a comprehensive program which networks with other agencies to figure out this huge puzzle and how to solve it. We have created exactly what you have asked for to solve your city problem. What is not possible is to solve this puzzle alone. We need our community partners, and our community partners need us. This never has been and never will be a competition between agencies. We complement each other, and each agency does a little something different than the other one because we all have different pieces to the puzzle. There is one big piece to this puzzle that we do have that no one else does, which is our emergency warming shelter. This is a service that every other agency that helps the homeless needs. You can't possibly help dead people out of homelessness. Making sure that we have a warming shelter is morally the only right thing to do. As our winter season approaches, we don't have time for squabbling. We need to focus on saving lives so people are able to get out of homelessness. As a city, we owe it to our citizens to take care of them. All great leaders take care of their people. Thank you.
Amanda, if I could ask you a quick question?
Sure.
What is a harm reduction specialist?
A harm reduction specialist does HIV testing.
Wonderful. Thank you. Claire Hall.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Williams, members of the council. For the record, my name is Claire Hall. I do live in Newport. I am one of your three Lincoln County Commissioners, and I want to briefly touch on a couple of things on this topic if I could. The first is a brand-new county matching grant program that we've established to incentivize more direct services to people experiencing homelessness. To give you a very brief history and context, since the nineteen eighties, the county has been providing general fund support for nonprofit social service agencies, which we really see as important partners in enhancing both public health and public safety. Today, we provide one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars a year to more than a dozen county nonprofits. But, like you, we were hearing consistently from people desiring us to do more to address homelessness, to help support, you know, not create new programs and a new bureaucracy, but really build the network of agencies and community programs we already have. So, we directed, as the Board of Commissioners, to establish a new pilot project, matching fund project. Sixty thousand dollars was set aside in our general fund budget this year, up to twenty thousand for Lincoln City, twenty thousand for Newport, twenty thousand for Waldport to partner with the communities on a matching fund basis. Our intent was to encourage a dollar-to-dollar match up to the twenty thousand dollar amount, and we really haven't put too many sideboards on it yet. Basically, though, the desire is for it to go to programs that will have a direct, immediate impact in terms of things like feeding, emergency shelter, case management, and service connections. I spoke informally with Councilor Anderson a few minutes before the meeting, and he asked, have we set up a formal process on that yet? And the answer is no. We would certainly like to work with you and the other two cities to figure out a way to do that with our other grant programs. We generally strive to have as little red tape as possible while still ensuring accountability. I'd also like to just speak up for a minute in support of the Lincoln City Warming Shelter and Resource Center, and thank you for your tremendous investment in this organization. I am consistently impressed by the effectiveness of the work and by the broad base of community support that they have developed. I want to let you know about a new partnership where we at the county are hopefully going to be supporting the warming shelter in addition to the other fund I just mentioned. You may be aware that back in two thousand five, I started Project Homeless Connect in Newport. And although we offer free bus service countywide on the day of the event, we know it's really a logistical challenge for somebody without a vehicle to make it safe from Otis to Newport and back in the same day. So I was really pleased a few years back when a Lincoln City group organized a Lincoln City Project Homeless Connect. That event served about a hundred people each year, but after two years, lost momentum and did not continue. So now, the warming shelter is stepping forward to partner with Samaritan House, which manages the Newport Homeless Connect. And with the county, we'll be providing a special overhead grant out of, each commissioner has a very small discretionary fund, and I'm going to use part of mine to cover the overhead costs and some of the direct service costs that make this event as possible. I think I've seen at least some of you at Project Homeless Connect through the years. Always a standing invitation for you to drop by. It's really, I think, an amazing event. It is not just a one-day service fair. I have seen so many people and families who have made organization, service, human connections that have been ongoing and life-changing. So that was what I had to say, and just wanted to see if you had any questions, especially related to the matching grant fund. If not, I'll just say thanks for your time.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah?
Thank you, Claire, very much for your, for your time and for giving us your little presentation. You had a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars that you gave out with the county, correct?
Yes.
Do you recall how many, how much total your grant requests were?
Uh, I don't have the exact number for this year, but I'm going to say generally, the requests end up being larger than the amount available, like probably two twenty-five, two hundred forty thousand a year is typical. So there is very difficult decision-making involved there, so I appreciate what's facing you because just about every program, you know, every program that applies is doing good work, making a difference. And so, we do have a citizen advisory committee that helps us review and rank the requests, but, you know, unfortunately, we're not able to fully fund them.
Do you know, by chance, do you happen to know Newport's outside agency request fund amount, or what they've...
I don't. I know they have a similar program, but I don't know that amount off the top of my head.
And then particularly with the twenty thousand dollar matching, are you looking to, to work specifically with the city or organizations within the city? And is that in, within our hundred fifty thousand dollars that we already are doing? So would you look to see if we're doing a hundred seventy thousand dollars next year?
Right. The idea would be hopefully to leverage some additional investment. So like, say, if, just hypothetically, if you took your hundred fifty thousand to a hundred seventy thousand, we would consider that qualif, I think, qualifying for the matching fund.
I mean, we're, we're twenty-five thousand under what the county total is giving us, us as a city, already.
Okay.
So I mean, I just, okay, thank you.
Did you have a question, Council Hinton?
No. Riley asked.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming forward.
Thanks for your time.
All right. Jamie, Jane, girl? Gerald. I'm sorry, Jamie, I'm going to mess it up.
Good evening.
Let's give us your name for the record, and keep that microphone close.
My name is Jamie Gerald.
Thank you.
A few weeks ago, a federal judge in Medford said precedent when he declared it a violation of our constitutional rights to punish those sleeping in public who have no other place to go. No one wants to see homelessness, though our reasons vary. We are fortunate to have leaders in our community working hard to help us recover from homelessness and provide us a place to go when conditions turn deadly. But those of us currently experiencing homelessness are not the only ones who may be in need of this help this coming winter. Those of us who work in order to live in Lincoln City are in a precarious position. Tourism is our only industry, and it boasts some of the lowest-paying job types. Yet our city depends on it in order to thrive. Those of us working in tourism, those of us turning our paychecks over for rent are the backbone of the city. Our workforce, our residents, are what allow the city to succeed. If that sounds strange to you, imagine for a moment what would happen to our fine town if we all just stopped going to work or paying our rent. Would the businesses survive? Would the fifty-four percent of homeowners who rent out their homes keep paying property taxes? Would the tourists take care of themselves? Some perhaps, but most would inevitably fail. If you look up the cost of living in Lincoln City, you'll find a number of around thirty thousand dollars for one individual. However, this is based on fairly skewed numbers. You see, according to the data, the average rent in Lincoln City is just a little over six hundred dollars. After scouring through the available sources for rentals, I found about twenty-five places available. Of the three listed studio apartments, the average and median cost was eight hundred dollars, meaning a resident would need to earn twenty-four hundred dollars per month, or twenty-eight thousand eight hundred per year to qualify to rent it. The only one-bedroom listed was seven hundred and fifty dollars, requiring its renter to earn just twenty-two hundred and fifty dollars per month, or twenty-seven thousand annually to qualify. There were nine two-bedrooms reportedly available, with an average rent of twelve sixty-two and a median rent of twelve ninety-five, meaning in order to qualify, a resident would have to learn, earn at least thirty-eight eighty-five per month, or forty-six thousand six hundred and twenty dollars per year. Of the twelve three-bedroom units available, the average cost is fifteen eighty-three, and the median price is fifteen hundred. There are two of these, which meaning the renter would have to earn forty-five hundred per month, or fifty-four thousand dollars per year to qualify to rent it. The median household income in Lincoln City is approximately twenty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars. The per capita income is just fifteen thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Our workforce cannot afford the available housing in Lincoln City, and there simply is not enough of it to go around. What this means is, many of the residents in Lincoln City are in danger of becoming homeless this winter. One job loss, one eviction, one change in household or family is all it takes to end up on the streets in Lincoln City. There is a giant crack in the foundation of our infrastructure, in the safety and security of our residents. Those of us who fall through the crack may have nowhere to turn other than the handful of nonprofits working to address the needs of our least fortunate residents. And only one of these offers any shelter, and that shelter is only available when weather conditions turn deadly. Our city defers to these nonprofits rather than providing a solution of its own. Yet, when grant funding was handed down, despite the match funding offer from the county, the homeless resource and warming shelter was the only nonprofit working with the homeless to receive reduced funding. The only reason given was that the services offered were duplicate. This is not true. There is no other type of emergency warming shelter in Lincoln City, let alone a shelter that provides overnight services. In addition to the reduced funding, the city chose not to approve the Taft Building for accessory use. The nonprofit was told by the city manager that no avenue of use would be approved. Zoning is the underlying issue. Zoning. This is a life-and-death situation, and I would challenge you to discover any available, efficient, appropriately-zoned building in Lincoln City to be used as an emergency warming shelter that is not owned by the city itself.
Thank you, Jamie. Appreciate it. Kelly Morris. Anywhere you'd like, it's fine. Just pull...
Whoa, sorry.
Pull the microphone close. Give us your name and your...
My name is Kelly Morris. I have no facts or dates or any of that, but I was wondering if the tension to the sewage in the select's bay has been addressed, or the health issues that go along with that. It seems to happen more often than it should, and I'm just wondering if that's been brought to the attention of people that can give a...
It has. I know that. I don't have the, the numbers in front of me that we've all been made aware of it. I know our public works department's aware of it. Our city manager, our city attorney is well aware of it. If anyone has anything they want to throw out at the... If anyone has anything they want to throw out at this moment.
I was wondering if the paying the fine for the sewage, whoever's leaking this,
close your mic.
Whoever's leaking the sewage is less costly for them to pay the fine rather than to fix the problem. It seems that, I'm wondering if that may be part of the problem, if the fines should be a lot higher than the fix, then they'll have to fix it then, right?
What I would recommend to you, and you're not going to lose any time here, is, this really isn't a time for the questions and answers, but what I would, what I'm going to recommend to you is to come to our Public Works Department tomorrow, and you can speak to someone there, and then give every answer you need.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thanks for coming forward.
Hello, Council. My name's Tim Milton. I'm sure most of you know me. I'm coming here really extremely frustrated and not very happy. So I'm going to try to keep it short and sweet. I'm a director at the Lincoln City Warming Shelter. I'm vice president of homeless solutions, chief executive officer of Beach Town Charities, Thrift and Gift. My hope tonight is that we start coming together for some action. I really hope the city and the people in this room can get past the white elephants. I really hope the sitting council can get past the vendettas and the personal agendas. I really hope city council and the city can reach an agreement and do something about helping our homeless and do something about it now. We have been down the rabbit hole so many times in this issue, misled, misadvised, and we take heat from the public for not having our ducks in a row, when we are advised to put this duck at the lead and follow that avenue, and then told six months later that that is not the way we should do it. It is extremely frustrating. Back to my rant. I'm sick and tired, and I'm honestly broken-hearted, at the legalistic mindsets and the adversarial behavior of the city officials. I'm sick and tired of officials recommending likely scenarios and then pulling the rug from out underneath us. I'm sick and tired of chasing rabbit down the rabbit holes again and again, wasting valuable time, effort, and resources. What I'm really super sick and tired of is when my volunteers and our employees are personally attacked, discredited, insulted, threatened by a city that doesn't have a clue what they're talking about sometimes. I really wish people would educate themselves on what the warming shelter does. We have a vetting program. I heard that no one knew about. Amanda has a 68-question questionnaire that she goes over to make sure that we are safe and we're providing safe services. Next page. I'm begging you to reconsider funding and realize that we can't and we will not be able to handle this if we continue to be challenged at every turn. Please, please realize, we have no plan for the homeless this summer, this winter. None. That is unexcusable. Sure, Lincoln City Warming Shelter will probably come up with something, not when you keep tying our hands and pulling the rug from underneath us. I'm trying to keep it short and sweet, and I'm trying not to be angry, but I am. I was asked by several of the council members that came and visited me, and which I greatly appreciate the guts to come down and talk to this guy, because he's not very friendly at times, but I am passionate about this. I was asked, what do you want us to do to help you? And here's my answers. I want you to allow us to continue at Taft Hall or make sure that we are able to continue at our new church. Don't throw any more legalistic BS at us. You need to accept the blame for throwing the baby out with the bathwater. I'm just tired of the disadvantaged people having nowhere to go. That doesn't even mean homeless, per se. There are people living in tents that use the Warming Shelter and the Resource Center. There are people living in cars with jobs using these locations. So get your mindset off the homeless drunk and realize that you're talking about someone that might be serving your food. Fund us a new permanent location. Give us the money to run it prudently. And prove yourself and your trust in us, and we will prove that you made a good decision. Give us a chance to save lives again, because no one is going to do it if we don't.
Thank you, Tim.
Mayor Williams, members of the council, my name is Jim Hoover. I understand you're in a quandary tonight over a sign ordinance, and I'm the person who complained about your sign ordinance, so I'll give you a little background on it. Four years ago, when Mayor Williams was running for mayor, I put up a sign and was told that it was oversized, and I approached the planning director in the planning department and presented them with a case from the United States Supreme Court called Galio versus Ledoux, which talks about signage being non-content-based because you can't discriminate against an individual based on what's on a sign. There's not more freedom for a realtor than there is for a political candidate. And for four years, the City of Lincoln City Planning Department has apparently thought about this because I have a memo here from the planning director dated June 19th where he sent to us, I guess, the planning staff says, "Our sign ordinance needs revisions for several reasons, the most important being that it is rife with content-based distinctions which violate the U.S. Constitution's free speech protections. A content-based distinction is one that treats signs differently based on what they say. Many of the proposed changes in the attached draft address these concerns." I was amazed when I got a call this last week from a candidate for mayor who doesn't happen to be a city councillor, and there's only one, and he informed me that he'd received the call.
Code enforcement officer, Raven Horace, the City of Lincoln City. Got a call from the planning department regarding the signs that you have put up. Just want to let you know that the temporary signs are too large. They're allowed to be eight square feet, which would be like a two-by-four, and yours are, you know, 70 inches by 47 inches are considerably too big. So you'll need to remove the signs or shrink the signs or something along those, that line of order. So if you have any questions, give me a call back here. My desk phone direct line is (541) 994-1454, or contact Kate over at City Hall, and she deals with signs and such. All right. Thanks. Bye.
Now, that's really amazing, because the next day, I've got another recording, but I only have three minutes. Maybe I'll play it during your public hearing if you decide to have that. He called back again and threatened financial costs, basically fines, if those signs remained. The amazing part is that less than half a block away, there's a 48-square-foot real estate sign. On the same piece of property, there's a 15-square-foot sign. Across the street, there's a, almost a 32-square-foot sign. One of the city council members has signs, I believe, that are bigger than eight square feet out there that's running for mayor. And at that point, I was really amazed. So I began looking through some city documentation. By the way, the agenda item for the planning or for the sign ordinance wasn't on the website a half an hour before, because I clicked on the city website, Agenda Packet, printed it off, and was amazed that it wasn't on there, because Mr. Chandler told me Friday afternoon at 5:00 on my voicemail that it would be something that was presented to the city council, and I would anticipate that if he was aware that it was going to be presented Monday at 5:00 Friday, that somebody could have got it on there at least Monday morning, so the city would have a chance to show up. Now, it looks like in June of 2019, there was a discussion with the planning commission, and the verbiage that's on the website says, "Where there are content-based distinctions, the proposal is to change to time-based, such as when a property is for sale, there can be a sign, but the sign doesn't have to have anything about the property being for sale." I'm not sure really what that means, but they were talking about it back in June. So to me, it looks like that the planning department knew that there was a problem that was rife with content-based distinctions that violated freedom of speech as determined in, by the Supreme Court and the U.S. Constitution back in June. The planning commission was kind of told the same thing. They just left out the constitutional violations about it. I have a copy of the ordinance that was proposed. It was actually something, I'm not even sure where I pulled it off, it wasn't on the Agenda Packet, and it doesn't talk anything about the Constitution. It's just amazing to me that this doesn't appear to be selective enforcement of a sign ordinance against a candidate who happens to not be a city council member less than three weeks before an election, while the staff full well knew that there were problems with content-based distinctions, and he should be allowed to have a sign equal to the largest sign allowed in Lincoln City on a vacant lot, which I believe is 48 square feet or larger. So this needs to be talked about, it needs to be dealt with, but the public should have a chance to weigh in on it and speak about it. But I understand why you guys have a problem tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate you. Just pull the microphone close and give us your name, and off you go.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Linda Aguirre, and I'm a volunteer with the Warming Shelter in Lincoln City. And I just want to, I'm advocating with others here tonight for a humanitarian solution to the overnight problem and trying to hopefully fund a shelter overnight this winter, because I know it's going to be a harsh one. And I have enjoyed working and with the staff. I've done several volunteer jobs since retiring here from California, and I find the Warming Shelter to be, have a real committed and compassionate staff, and hopefully we can continue our work and provide shelter for the homeless at night.
That's well.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, city council members. I am one of the people who volunteers.
Just for the record, give us your name.
Oh, my name is Kathleen Lewis.
Thank you.
I am one of the people who volunteers at the Taft Lincoln City Resource Center and Warming Shelter. I am also one of the people who lives on very low income. I make less than $17,000 a year. I do volunteer work because I believe in what they do. I just want everybody to know that as a member of the community, I believe in what's going on at the center. I feel that my work is being helpful within the community. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Kathleen. Appreciate it. That was the last of people who'd signed up. Anyone who did not sign up wish to speak right now? Seeing none, we move on. Thank you all, and thank you for your courtesy. And if you're not going to stay for the rest of the meeting, now's a great time to shuffle out, but feel free. Okay. Yeah, I figured everyone would be getting up. We'll give it a second here. Yeah, right? And Chief, or Richard, or someone, if you can make sure the doors get closed on the way out, that'd be great. Thank you. Looks like there's going to be some discussion out there. Well, I don't know. Yeah, I didn't think about that. Oh, yeah. Well, he looks comfortable. All right, we're going to continue on now. Ordinances. We have ordinance number 201811. I'm just going to turn over Mr. Appicello.
Your honor, council, this is second reading of ordinance 2018-11, an ordinance of the City of Lincoln City, amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title II, Administration and Personnel, Chapter 206, City Point of Bodies, amending Section 206-045, Hearing Officer appointment, and amending Section 206-060, Agenda Minutes, to address a point of bodies' order of business, a point of body order of business. I have some suggested additional language in the draft ordinance. I added the following sentence based upon the discussion, and that is, at the end of the order of proceedings, I wrote, "Nothing in this ordinance prohibits a point of bodies from holding public hearings or requesting public input on a point of body agenda items within the scope of their delegated authority." That's based on our discussion at the last meeting. So with that, I would recommend approval of second reading with the changes as read and adoption of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second. Motion to second, discussion?
I just want to know why there's some closed prins in here at the end of paragraph A and the end of, after 10.
Yeah, I can't explain the prins at the end of paragraph 10.
There's also one at the end of A. On the previous page.
Okay, I'll make sure we correct that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Casper? Yes. Walke?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
And Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance 201812.
Your honor, council, this is first reading of ordinance 201812, an ordinance of the City of Lincoln City, providing for the vacation of a portion of Southwest Jetty Avenue. The ordinance is set forth, it has three exhibits. A is the legal description of the property being vacated. B is the legal description of the property, which is as a condition of approval, to be dedicated, and Exhibit C represents findings addressing the statutory criteria. Ask for approval of first reading of ordinance 201812.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Walke?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
And Casper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Your honor, council, as we did not have a unanimous vote, I will put this item on the agenda for October 8th, I believe, for second reading.
Thank you. Okay, Resolutions, 201819, a resolution of the City of Lincoln City, Oregon, authorizing financing for police building and providing for related matters.
Good evening. This resolution was drafted by our bond council, so I might be a little more legalese than what I usually do. We are targeting, based on the progression of the police building, we're targeting issuing bonds mid-November. To do that, we've submitted a resolution which would authorize financing via bond. The maximum amount that is provided for in the resolution is $12.5 million. I believe currently our plan, the plan is either 10 or 10.5 million, but this provides some wiggle room in case something comes up and council decides to issue a little more than the current plan. However, it is capped, cannot be more than $12.5 million with this resolution. I don't know if there's any specific questions. Obviously, this will come back to you again before we actually issue to finalize the
Move to approve Resolution 2018-19.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Williams?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Walke?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Debbie. That wasn't too horrible. Special Order Business, recommendation from the Public Arts Committee for funding generated from the police building construction. Public Arts Committee? Yes, no? Going, going? Gone. We'll reserve you in case somebody shows up. Local agency agreement for ODOT for Northeast West Devils Lake Road Bridge Project.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm La-
I'm Lila Bradley, the Public Works Director. And this agreement with ODOT for the West Devils Lake Road Bridge, it's the one, the bridge is located just south of the hospital on West Devils Lake Road, parallel with our new boardwalk. And bridges in the state are inspected annually by ODOT with the 2014 or 2104 inspection results. This bridge reached the point of deterioration and became eligible for a 2018-2021 State Transportation Improvement Program. And we applied for that in 2015, and it was approved last year. And so in the past, most bridge projects were managed by ODOT. However, the number of bridge projects exceeds ODOT's ability to deliver, and ODOT called us and asked us to handle this project for them. And so it is, let's see, I probably don't need to explain everything on here to you. Okay. So the total amount available to the city for delivering the completed project, engineering and construction, is $1,193,857. And the city will deliver the project complying with the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, the ASHTO, specifications and federal permit provisions. So I think, and so if the costs, their contract, their contracts always read, you know, that will take over any above and beyond their amounts. And so on this one, the financial impact of costs remain within the approved amount and/or if ODOT approves increasing the funds to match the actual costs, the city should have not have impact other than just our staff time. And so we would manage the project and the contractor that's hired for it. So if you have any questions on this one?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Happy to answer them.
Lila, I have a couple of questions. One is on, and you don't have these pages, but on the packet, page 63, under Terms, I just have a question.
I do, I do have that.
Okay, item three. It just states that the state will reimburse the agency, which is us, 89.73% of eligible funds for the project. What happens to that other 10.27%?
That's when we go back to them and negotiate. So what we'll be able to do is bid this project and have an actual cost before it's, and you'll see it before it's awarded. And so if it's over that amount, then we'll have to go back and talk to them about it and renegotiate.
So who keeps that 10%, 10.20? Whoop, now I'm way down here. Can't fix this chair. Excuse me.
That's the state. So they get, they get the federal funding. It's just like our other SDP agreements where they, the state keeps that other part of the money for managing a project.
That's just for money changing hands?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. My other question is item number four. And in the packet, it's highlighted. I'm just wondering if you wanted to revise that sentence or is it okay as is?
And which, on 63 as well?
Page 63, item four.
Mine's not highlighted, so.
Well, it is in the packet.
Okay.
It's not really a highlight, it's a bubble. And the wording there is, "Parties agree that should state's estimated project cost exceed that amount, the parties will meet to determine how to pay for the additional costs." And that was a note from the city engineer. Are we ignoring that comment or is it going to be incorporated in that paragraph? I think.
I think it's really already in there, so.
So we need to get rid of the little bubble?
Yeah, we'll get rid of that.
Does that satisfy you, councilor?
Is that what you were saying?
Yes, I was just getting to it. You're there one minute before me. Okay, I did have another question on page 66. So I will go to 66 before Susan does. And my question is this, and this is number nine, item number nine, project change request There are some highlights on this page and the following page. And I'm just wondering if those are kind of notes to yourself or highlights to yourself or is that something you want to counsel to think about or know something about? Number nine is highlighted, it says project change request, PCR process, and it's just highlighted, so that's.
Yeah, those could have just been notes that we, things that we highlighted.
So then we'll disregard the highlight?
I would.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Is, I don't know if that's design stage or anything, but just knowing, will that, will there be protection to the walking bridge from that?
Yes.
Because it's so sketch like that?
We, we actually, we were in discussions with them before we even designed and built the walking, the boardwalk.
Awesome.
So, yeah, we're, we're all coordinated and there's room. And we're doing, we're doing a waterline project design right now that we'll bring to you later. And it will have the waterline off the bridge and board underneath. And so we're working on all of that.
Cool.
Council Hogan, for those of us over, well over 30, what does sketch mean?
Sketchy means, is it sketchy? Like, is it sketch? Is it sketchy? Because I've ridden my bike there, and when you're coming south, frightening. When you're coming south and you're coming down East Devils, West Devils Lake Road and you're turning that turn and you're on the bridge side, the road is flat, but it's got gravel all over it. And when you're trying to stop, you're, you know, you either try to take that footbridge, which is not that fun going that fast on a bike, or you take the street. But there's a five-foot drop between you, the road and the bridge. And so you have to be really careful or else you're going to go right down in there and into the piling. So I mean, if it's banked or protected there and even driving, it's not fun when another car comes from behind you while you're in that really sketch area.
Just try to keep up on my slang.
That's, that's good to hear because I've had people asking me to put a berm or curbing along there and then you wouldn't be able to ride at all.
It's frightening, yeah.
Any other questions?
I have a teeny question. On page 68, number 17, about the utility relocation or construction, either, there's an expense for, eligible expense for the owner or B expense is not eligible. In either case, who's going to pay for that? The owner?
That's the waterline project that we have coordinated with this project. And so it's a city project that was budgeted and approved by, by you. And so we're in the process of surveying it right now.
Okay.
And so we'll build it and get the waterline off the bridge by the time the bridge is being built. And then other utilities, just they move on their own. I think natural gas is on there. We don't have any sewer on the bridge, just the waterline.
Well, the only thing I'd like to say is, Lila, I just, I'm so thankful that you keep an eye on these things and that I've yet to see, with the exception of one kind of sketchy contractor. It's all been done so well, and I appreciate you keeping us updated and making these complex ideas understandable, especially for laypeople like myself who have no construction skills whatsoever.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank our staff, our city engineer, Stephanie Reed and Terry Chamberlain as well, for following up on these projects and really handling all the hard work on these because taking these projects over is, is difficult. But if we don't do it, then we don't have it here for our citizens. So it's really important for us to do this.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, looking for approval or motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the local agency agreement number 32584 for the Northeast West Devils Lake Road Bridge Project under the state-funded local project program.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion? Hearing none. Well, it might have a little money, so let's just throw it out for a roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Walke?
Yes.
And Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Lila.
Thank you.
Your honor?
Please.
Can we go back to case six? No one from the Arts Committee is going to be showing up because it says that Ed would be presenting. And I went out and asked Ed and he said he knew nothing about it, so I can try to handle it if you'd like.
So you're going to address case six?
If, if you'd like, I'll, when you're ready.
That's just fine with me. Come on, you know the way.
So counsel, the basic, what's on the agenda is a recommendation from the Public Arts Committee. And the gist of it is the Public Arts Committee on their September 12th meeting voted to recommend to the city council that the $60,000 of the percent for art funds generated by the construction of the new police station be used for our project somewhere other than the police station being built. And so that's their recommendation. That recommendation is permissible because the percent for art ordinance does not require the money to be spent at the location where the construction is occurring. You did, however, adopt a Parks Master Plan, which says that, you know, you can provide for artwork as part of the construction of buildings. So that's the recommendation. If you disagree with it, you can make an alternative decision, but that's the recommendation that has been forwarded. Ed, if you have anything else to add, you were there, I suppose.
If you.
Please.
Okay. You haven't, you don't have anything to say?
Well.
I can't believe it.
Keep, keep in mind, I'm the liaison to the, to the Public Arts Committee. When I was at the last meeting, there were two things that came up. One was an ordinance and one was from the Parks Master, or the Arts Committee Master Plan. And I think Richard alluded to this. It says that one-half percent of the construction of each major construction project shall be used for the acquisition of a work or works of art to be owned by the city and to be displayed in an area or areas frequently visited by the public within city limits, whether or not such area or areas are at the site of the major construction project. When the committee was discussing the money to be generated by the police station, this was one of the considerations, you know, is it going to be in an area that's highly visible to the general public? The police stations kind of tucked away from where we have a lot of traffic. Their preference was something along Highway 101 where, you know, we have 8.8 million vehicles go by a year, 22 million pairs of eyeballs that would, would see the artwork. The other one is, and this was originally approved by city council in 2006, it's Public Art Committee Guidelines. And it was included in the, the new Public Art Master Plan. And Section 5.5, application of percent for arts funds exclusions, excuse me. Point two says that decorative, ornamental or functional elements that are designed by the architect or consultants engaged by the architect were elements generally considered to be components of a landscape architectural design designed by a landscape architect as opposed to an artist commissioned for this purpose. One of their thoughts was that if we're adding accoutrements to the, the police station, does that fall within decorative or ornamental items, you know, being put there at the behest of the architect? So those were the two main concerns when it came to it. And then the third is simply that it's not very often, there's a big project that adds a fair amount of money into the, the Public Arts Fund. And they're afraid this is an opportunity that'll come and go and it'll be a long time before there's an amount of money that large that would help allow for a large, high-impact, highly visible work to be able to put up, be able to put up in Lincoln City. So that, to my best understanding, was the rationale that was put forth by the, the Arts Committee.
If I could ask a question, why isn't someone here from there, from them?
I think I'm going to take blame for that. If my name was on the, the notice that went to city council, I probably was the person who should have communicated with the Arts Committee to see if they were here.
Okay, because my concern is I have questions.
There's a member from the Arts Committee here. Excuse me.
All right, well, then I guess that, no, thank you, that's fine. I guess we can, if you don't mind filling that role while we talk here. I'm sure it'll be fine. Well, my question is, I always, okay, number one, big fan of public art, have been from day one, everyone knows that. Want a brand-new police building, too. So then we have to decide where this money gets allocated, where the art goes. And so in this discussion, when I hear that we have, you know, no one's visiting that place or will be unlikely to visit it, and I have no numbers to back it up, I would love to have seen something from the police department that says, here's how many people stop by on a regular basis. Here's how many people work here. Give me some information that I can work with in my mind. It was sold to us, the new police building, as, what did I put down here? That is going to be part of the community. We want to draw people in, we're making it friendly so people come to see it. We're going to be investing in a community room for this place so that we have public meetings there, if I remember right correctly. And for me, part of the, the joy of art ties in with what we've been trying to do through the VCB and our new logo is that unusual part. Is it, it'd be unusual to find a nice piece of art at the city police building. Yeah, to me, that would be a pretty great find. I understand the concept of, let's put it out where everyone can see it, but there's that part of that discovery that I think we've worked so hard through the VCB to, to build as our reputation. You never know what you're going to find around the next corner here. So I'm not a big fan of the way this is presented. I, I will probably defer to the Arts Committee, they've put their time and effort into it.
Yeah, if I can make a suggestion?
Sure.
Mayor, I was caught a little bit by surprise on this. I'd really like the advice to come from the Advisory Committee. Would it be too much of a delay to have them do a formal presentation on this?
I would so appreciate it. If council doesn't mind.
Could we have a little more discussion?
Please, yeah, jump on in.
It was kind of my understanding over all of the discussions through the, with the architects, through the work sessions that we've held and through other council discussions that the money generated from building this building, the percent for arts, would be going back to the building. And so that's kind of what I was thinking. And in addition, we appropriated $10,000 for an art coordinator that would work with the police architect and the art community, which would include the art commis, committee. And I have one more other thing to say is that in our last year's budget, the budget manager put in $75,000 into the art line item. And we moved that out for that year because they didn't have any projects yet because they were still working on their list. So I would only assume that the art, I mean, that the budget manager would put that amount back in that I would support fully. So that's just, I just, that's what I, where I was coming from. So I was kind of surprised, actually, by this, by this recommendation from the art committee. And they hadn't been spoken with, you know, I had, and I had asked the question yet even at council meetings, if any staff had yet spoken with the, with art committee about the police building and the art there. And everybody's kind of deer in the headlights, well, we've been working on this for what, a year? And art was one of the first things that we were talking about in my recollection. So today, if we voted, I would vote no because I would assume, which I shouldn't do, but I would hope instead, that the budget manager would put in $75,000 into our next year's budget so we could do one of those larger, bigger projects, which we have been talking about, and make this money available from the police building to the police building for art because we are trying to make it a friendlier place. There are people that are traumatized that come into the police building, and we wanted it to be a welcoming feature. And as the mayor said, we included a community room so the community could use the, use the space for gathering. And so that's where I'm at.
So I guess if there's no objection, we'll bring this back later another time? With Council Casper?
Yeah, I'd appreciate more explanation. And as far as having artwork along 101, we have this fantastic giant-looking thing over at Regatta Park. And that's kind of off the beaten path, but it draws people there. And as I recall, we had to add extra money to that as it was created. And we did that, we took that commitment. I think there's also a park that's in the works near the police station, which would also be appreciated as an art arena. So I'd appreciate more information as well.
Mr. Mayor, just to, for clarification, no.
more money for that big piece at Regatta, the artists and community paid, but the fund for the half percent for art didn't pay any more than what they contracted for, regardless of the price.
So who paid for it?
They went out and raised some money for the artists, but we, but the taxpayer money did not go there.
Then my question is, how is this, all these comments going to get relayed to the park, or the Public Arts Committee?
I'll, I'll talk to the head of the Public Arts Committee, give her a summary, maybe suggest that she watch the video for this portion of the meeting.
That would be a great idea.
And we'll see if we can get a formal presentation put together and a discussion with the Arts Committee present.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate it.
I just wanted to say that the memo about this agenda item only has Mr. Chandler's name on it, so I guess that's why no one else was informed that they needed to be here. I think this is a sad case of lack of communication from the very beginning, and I wish it all would have been handled a lot differently. But I look forward to more information next meeting.
Thank you. So, Counsel, within that, what would you like, how would that structure itself so that we can pass this along to the communication? How would you like to have seen it come down?
I would have liked more communication with the Public Arts Committee when we were first discussing art in the Police Department.
Oh, them, with us?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, now we're back to Imagine Lincoln City, Community Visioning Project. Where are you going? Oh, okay. This is Richard's.
That was polled.
Oh, we polled it?
Yeah.
And what are you doing here?
Yeah, the Planning Commission is...
Oh, you're over there now. Never mind, Richard Towns in Planning.
Over there.
There you go.
The Planning Commission wants to put a little bit more time and review on it before they send it on to the Council. So it'll probably come back next month.
Great, forward to it. Thank you. All right, well, we're just rolling along. We have no city manager unless Chief Palmer has anything. Nope, we're good to go. Get the thumbs up. Mr. Appicello?
First off, there was an allegation of selective enforcement that was made under public comments, and I'll point out that the code enforcement officer contacted anyone with oversized signs, not just the candidate that he was referring to. The question I have for you, Counsel, is do you, since the item was not added to the agenda, do you wish to have a special meeting to address that ordinance? I know the League of Oregon Cities is the end of this week, and some of you are going. So we can do it on October 8th, which is our next regular meeting, or we can, if you want to try to do it, say Wednesday of this week, we could do it. The Planning Commission has a meeting, I think, scheduled next week on Tuesday, but otherwise, I don't think the building is, the room is booked. So if you have a preference, let me know. If not, it'll be on, here on the 8th.
What about next Monday?
Next Monday, I don't see any reason why we couldn't do it next Monday. It would be a special meeting, we'd...
I'm okay Monday, not Wednesday.
I could do Monday, not Wednesday.
Monday's fine.
Okay. Counsel, walking?
Yeah, I'm available either one.
Monday or?
Well, I'm available Wednesday, if it's not too late. I have to head to Eugene.
I think we're talking about a week from today.
Oh, Monday, right, right, okay.
So I'll get with the city recorder and set a meeting, special meeting for next Monday, six o'clock.
Sorry about that?
Six o'clock.
Okay. Can we do five, Counsel Hugland, or is that pushing?
No, I can, five's fine.
Is five good with you guys?
That would be great.
Okay, five o'clock next Monday?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is that it?
I don't have anything else.
Thank you so much. No executive session. Additional comments from citizens present on non-agenda items. Up, up, and out of the chair. There we go.
Always can tell from the suspenders. But I will tell you, my name again is Jay Roloff. I am a founding member of the Lincoln City Warming Shelter. I also serve on the Grant Committee of the Lincoln City Warming Shelter, along with Patrick, who you heard from earlier. And there's one area that I would like to emphasize that Patrick didn't, and I'd like to fill in that gap, if I might, at this point. And that is that although we have secured a temporary site, the First Baptist Church, for this coming winter, we have not secured sufficient funding to go through the end of the year and keep the door open. We have grants outstanding, but there is no guarantee that we will have sufficient funds coming in from those grants. And if the money is not there, from a fiduciary responsibility perspective, our board is prepared to seriously consider dissolving the Warming Shelter as a corporation, 501(c)(3), paying off incurred liabilities, and turning the problem of caring for the homeless over to the city to handle. We're hoping that we're going to get donations. And in essence, the presentation that Patrick gave to you was given to the newspapers as well. And in that missive to the community at large, we're saying that we're going to do everything we can to keep the doors open. But our most pressing need is financial support. And as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, we are glad to provide tax receipts for all money donations. For details on how to donate, go to www.lincolncitywarmingshelter.com, or contact our program director, Amanda Cherry Holmes, at 541-264-0457. We also need volunteers to keep this beast running. So we're asking the community at large, and all the help we can get from you, to get help in the form of volunteers, from checking in clients at the front desk of the Resource Center, to providing overnight security on nights when the shelter is open. And once again, to find out more about this, you can contact our volunteer coordinator, who is Sharon Padilla, 541-992-5748. Thank you for your time.
Jay, can I ask you, if you could answer a question. If you can't tonight, that's fine. You're asking for volunteers, and I think I know some of the hesitancy some people might have who have never volunteered. Could you speak to how difficult or easy it is to volunteer and participate through a night?
Well, a lot depends upon what your position is. Probably one of the most difficult positions to fill at the Warming Shelter is the supervisory position, the overnight supervisory position, and the, and the security position, because you have to stay awake all night, in essence. And that's tough to get any, especially, I'm 78 years old. I don't raise my hand at board meetings to volunteer, no matter how passionately Amanda asks to help. I just can't do it anymore at my age. So that's one of the toughest. We operate a kitchen facility there, too, and it's difficult to get people to serve in that capacity because there's setting up and cleaning up, that kind of thing. Those are the two most difficult ones. Patrick, did you have another one?
I guess, yeah, I wanted to just address, I hope you'd address, safety.
Safety is one of the ones that's hard to fill. We have a couple of volunteers who have training.
No, no, no. If I were just to show up and say, can I help serve food tonight? Would I have any fear of being assaulted? Would I have a reason to be afraid to come in and help?
Okay. I, we've not had that problem. All of our volunteers are given a phone, and we just tell them, you don't have to ascertain if there's an infraction, or a difficulty, or a threat. If you feel threatened, you call 911. That's just it. We don't impose upon them a responsibility to do diagnostics, or figure out if the guy's a wacko, or in drugs, or whatever like that. If it occurs, we just tell them to call 911, and we get a pretty good response from the police.
That's all I want. Okay, thank you. I encourage everyone to volunteer. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Hello again, I'm Patrick Alexander, President of the Lincoln City Warming Shelter. Thank you very much for your time earlier tonight. Seeing as we're running ahead of time, or, well, not ahead of time.
It says you.
They've gone later, is my point. I wanted just to address one other thing, one much more trivial matter, which has also had a lot of discussion on social media, which is our grant application, and the state of our grant application when it came in. We, we submitted our grant application on April 6th. The grant application asks eight questions, and asks for a number of supporting documents. We had answers to all eight questions, and all the requested documents were attached. On August 13th, we received a letter in the mail asking for more detailed, for a more detailed financial statement, and for additional details regarding our legal ability to operate overnight in Taft Hall. I think the financial statement that we submitted at first was deemed to be brief, and it was indeed brief. The application form asks, and I quote, "for a brief financial statement." And seeing as we've got time, I'll read our brief financial statement that we originally submitted. And it says in full, "As of April 3rd, the Lincoln City Warming Shelter has a bank balance of $32,247, which combined with furniture and fixtures valued at $3,616, makes for total assets of $35,863." So that is brief. And we submitted it that way because that's what it asked for. I can completely understand that a more significant, a more detailed financial statement would be advantageous, and we were happy to provide that. And we were also happy to provide the additional details about the current standing of our efforts to remain in Taft Hall overnight. So we were able to collect and submit that additional requested information, and submit it within the two days provided by the letter. So all the requested information was in the hands of the granting committee members by the time they made their donation deliberations. And I wanted to mention this partly just so that people at home know, but also because there had been some discussion amongst councilors of the granting process, and how there have been, what I would describe as some growing pains. As, as it has grown, it's tripled in size, it's become a more, it has become something more approaching a grant program rather than a donation program. And so it, there have been some growing pains as that process has gone on. And I think it was either Counsel Hinton or Counsel Hugland who mentioned that they would like to see some changes, and maybe some more guidance on those forms, and I think that's a great idea. The county grant application, or donation application, has a form, a set Excel spreadsheet that you type your details into. And so it's a little more work, but it means that you're very, very clear on what they want and what they don't want. And so that, I think, is a great example. But once again, I wanted to thank you for making that donation fund available, and for what doesn't get mentioned often enough, which is your voluntary service to Lincoln City. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Mr. Hoover?
Once again, Jim Hoover, thank you, Mayor, and members of the Council. Thank you for holding this special meeting, but we're in the middle of an election. And elections count. We know that from a lot of different standpoints. We know that because there's people on this council that are running for reelection. And if Mr. Dolly's constitutionally protected freedom of speech has been violated, and if individuals who ask Mr. Dolly to put a sign on their property representing their support for him, if their constitutional rights have been violated, I would like to see this council direct staff to, A, apologize to Mr. Dolly publicly, and give him authorization to rebuild his signs that he expended money to take apart and put on the lot, so that his constitutional protected, and other people's constitutionally protected rights of freedom of speech are allowed to exist in this election. And elections matter. This is the second recording that Mr. Dolly, see if I can get it to play here. Boy, I hope I can get this going. Here we go.
Hello, Mr. Dolly, this is Code Enforcement Officer Gravenhorst, getting back with you about the sign issue. We had discussed that you would have the signs down by Monday. That's today, obviously, and so that needs to occur, otherwise tomorrow we'll be starting violations for the sign ordinance, which carries a fairly stiff sign, and each day is a separate violation. So if you could just make sure that you have the signs down today, and, you know, it's up to you whether you replace them or not, but it can't be uppassed today. If you have any questions, just give me a call back here at the Police Department. Thanks, bye.
So this is a member of the Police Department calling a candidate for public office when the Planning Department has acknowledged that their sign ordinance is rife with constitutional violations of freedom of speech. So the candidate goes into the Police, or into the Planning Department, and asks what he can do about the signs. And he's told, well, you can cut your signs apart, and you can place them on two poles. And in keeping with the, I think the words were, the intent, they need to be 12 feet apart. Once again, an interpretation of a sign ordinance that's in the process of being revised. And while I'm glad you're having this special meeting on Monday, the Planning Department's been aware of this since at least June 2018, when the memo was written, and I'm assuming they were aware of it before then, and a discussion of this was had with the Planning Commission. And so I'm wondering why we're waiting until the last minute, when candidates are being threatened with fines and violations, and why we're going to use a third of the remaining time to the election to try to resolve something that should have been resolved four years ago, and should have been resolved four months ago, and shouldn't have ever happened one week ago. And if the citizens of Lincoln City aren't quaking in their shoes over this type of action, that probably exists more than this, based on discretionary decisions, or information that's given to people over the counter, or on websites that the city has, I'm not sure what would cause you to feel more uncomfortable than your constitutional rights being intentionally violated. So, thank you for the meeting Monday. Once again, if it's found that knowledge was had by the Planning Department, which they've acknowledged, and if his constitutional rights to freedom of speech were violated, I believe he is a candidate, and those people had signs deserve at minimum an apology, and maybe reimbursement for the cost of tearing the signs apart, and him being allowed to put signs up that are allowed to the maximum size of the largest sign in that zone that's allowed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody else? Am I going to be putting you too much on the spot and ask who this young fellow in uniform is, if he wants to come up and say anything? I always love a guy in uniform. I don't want to put you on, if you don't want to, you don't have to. I'd love to have you come and say hi, though.
and be any Eagle Scout.
Awesome. Well, yeah, thank you. Okay, anyone else? And I promise not to pull anyone else from the audience. All right, Counsel?
Yes, I have, I have something. I wanted to thank all the community members for your heartfelt, caring comments, and passionate support. passionate support for the homeless programs. The homeless problem impacts so many of our citizens, especially the devastation of our families with children. Homelessness is a situation that none of us want to experience, and have empathy for those who have no stable environment to call home. The history of the homeless situation came to light last year, when the city manager invited the nonprofits and concerned citizens to a workshop, to hopefully coordinate efforts and resources while not overlapping services. After much discussion and many meetings, it was apparent that coordination among all the groups was not possible, it was an umbrella idea that did not work. The city council identified homelessness as a priority, and even provided an increase in grant program that gave money to various nonprofit organizations. The goal was to use this money to seek further funding for ongoing programs of resources and assistance, to provide a stable facility that would meet the needs of this everlasting, changing, growing population. The goal has not been achieved as a sustainable concept. So now, instead of giving up on supporting our need to help our homeless population, it appears that we need to look at all and other approaches to deal with this ever-growing situation, and in light of all the information presented tonight, I move to direct the staff to plan and provide a work session to deal with the Lincoln City homeless population that will include funding, zoning, and intergovernmental cooperation.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion?
Is there a date set for October 15th for a work session? I think we do.
There is.
Do we have a topic for, for it at this point?
Yeah, if, if I can, I was asking that of Ron last week, and he pushed me out through November to work sessions, so it would be out.
Or how about if we ask him to do it as soon as possible? We don't want to miss, miss any opportunities for the cool-
As soon as possible?
As soon as possible.
Even, maybe even a special, special work session, but to try to implement this as soon as possible, for the betterment of everyone.
Revised motion, yes, as soon as possible?
As soon as possible.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, and we'll get back to that date, thank you very much. Anything else, Counsel Kasper?
I would like to say that indeed the committee is making recommendations to streamline the process for writing grants. We came from having no guidelines when we first came on, to eight items, and nobody, nobody's application was denied or dinged for paperwork that was not there, we just needed more information, there were no, there were no, there's zero influence, we just wanted clarification, and we hope to streamline the process, give training, maybe give examples of what's expected, and hopefully this will work.
Thank you. Someone say something, Counsel Hugland?
I just wanted to say that I'm looking forward to League of Oregon Cities Conference later this week, I'm planning on spending a day-long sessions on housing, and half-a-day sessions on homelessness, so I hope to come home with some ideas to share.
Thank you, Counsel Hinton.
Okay, I just wanted to thank the Public Works Director and her crew, I'm speaking of Lila Bradley, there was that significant leak that we learned about, 24-inch sewer main pipe at Schooner Creek, and she, I spoke with her for a few minutes today, and she was out there from one pump station to another, trying to find out where the leak was coming from, because it wasn't obvious, but I just want to also thank them for their foresight, for putting in, requesting of the council, which the council full-heartedly supported a redundant system, we went through that process of the double pipes, I think they're 14 inches, just in case, so, because there was no way to actually turn off that 24-inch to clean it and maintain it, and so I just want to say that was a great success, and congratulations, and you found the leak, and you turned it off, and you turned on the other two pipes, the redundant system, which worked, and thank you so much.
Anyone else? Counsel Hugland?
I'd just like to see where the plastic bag issue is in our timeline of things to discuss, and it's been brought back to my attention, and to see where it is, you know, within us, is that a work session? I don't recall exactly where that is in the priority of things to discuss, and, you know, they have the plastics, you know, single-use plastics, the straws, the plastic bags, and so, I just don't recall where that is, if, I've mentioned it a few times, you know, as we all remember, Kip was talking about it, we talked about it, and I brought it back, so I just want to really get an answer to where that is, and if you guys want to talk about it again. So I don't know if it's in a workshop in the future, or what.
My understanding is that we had asked for a workshop or something, and then the recycling fiasco happened, and went into, remember, Ron was sharing with us the do less, you know, kind of, he grabbed that whole scenario, and we all rolled from plastic bags into recycling more intelligently, or something, or doing-
Reducing.
Reducing, and so I, I don't think, to my knowledge, that's not a topic I've heard in October or November on work sessions, so.
And if I can remember right, it kind of died, a lot of it based on the testimony we had from Tina French concerning, you know, the transportation costs versus, you know, the carbon output to get these things here, and I think a lot of people were like, oh, we need some more information. So I'm always up for, you know, hearing more and getting some facts, so anytime someone wants to set that up, I'd have no big objection.
I, I would like to, to make a motion to bring plastic, single-use plastic and plastic bag ban back up to council, so, work session.
See, that's what I'm not in favor of.
I know you're not, that's fine.
I'd rather, if we wanted to have a discussion of plastics, I'm, I'm up for that, but-
All, all of it together, single-use plastics and plastic bags.
Right, but not in terms of a ban, I'm just telling my opinion, you can make a motion, I just, I don't, I wouldn't support that.
It's fine by me.
I agree, what you're calling for is a work session-
Right.
-that add to our list of work session topics-
I understand.
-but just to make sure it's on there, and not limited to plastic bags-
Correct.
Yeah, plastic, to the mayor's point. I'm game.
Was there a second?
We need-
Okay, motion, second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, me. Motion carries. Anyone else?
I did.
Sorry, yeah, anyone else? Counsel Anderson?
Just wanted to remind you that-
Oh, yeah, I'll go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think we all got a note from Ron-
There you go.
He's got, he's off on some kind of city manager conference, and something happened because he seemed to be excited and elated with whatever he was hearing, so he asked us to be sure to remind people to watch his blog, if you're a blog watcher, and-
Ron's Reports.
Ron's, oh, Ron's Reports, there we go, but it, fortunately, it's on the Lincoln City website, so you can go to that, and it's on the homepage, so he'll be sharing information there. So I think that's an advertisement for his, Ron's blog.
Ron's blog, okay. Anyone else? The only thing I have to throw out is throughout the last couple of years, you've heard me speak about Celebrate Recovery out at Faith Baptist Church, they went on hiatus while they restructured their program, it is back up and running again, Tuesday night, 6:00 PM, Faith Baptist Church, at the far end of town. It has been streamlined, for anyone who's been there, it was a little long, so they've tightened it up, not the big elaborate meals anymore, but some food, beverage, and a refocusing on not just folks who are dealing with chemical addictions, but physical addictions of any sort, and, and they call them hang-ups, but if, it's a great place to come, if you're just feeling like you need to talk to somebody, so every Tuesday night, Faith Baptist Church, 6:00 PM. If there's nothing else for the good of the order, may God bless you all, may God bless Lincoln City, we are adjourned. I left the TV on.